Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us tonight for the February 26 regular council meeting. I'll call it to order.
Would you please latest in the pledge?
Yeah.
Like you do.
Who are you pointing?
He's helping.
Yeah.
There.
In the white.
United States of America and to their power for which it stands, one nation under God and in this law. And with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Eric. All right. But could you please take the role?
Councilmember Burris.
President.
Councilmember Douglas.
President.
Councilmember Hilberg.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem McCauley.
Here.
Mayor Loman.
Here.
Item 1D, can I get a motion to approve the agenda order?
Motion to approve.
My second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Bye.
All right. And item 1E, statement of conflict interest. Do we have any changes in conflict interest?
No change.
No change?
All right.
No change either.
Okay, item two, the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be approved by one blanket motion with a council vote unless a council member or a member of the public requests an item be pulled from consent for discussion. Items pulled will be addressed after council completes the consent calendar vote and will require a separate motion. Are there any items that the council or public would like to pull from our consent calendar?
I'll move approval of the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Right. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Bye.
Great. And as a reminder to council, the public is meeting is being live streamed. Please be sure to speak clearly into the microphones when you come up. Make sure the green light's on and that way everybody can hear you. All right, item three, agency reports. This is the end of the month, so unless we have any updates, there's not going to be any actual reports. Placer County sheriffs, did you have anything to update?
No.
Yeah.
Yeah. Great, thank you. CHP, any updates? All right. Cal Fire?
We do have an update.
Okay, great, thank you.
Oh, real quick, just an update for you guys. We will be going to full staffing for our team starting March 17th, and that is with the exception of aircraft.
There we go. It's on now. Not used to going first, so. So we will be fully staffed March 17th with the exception of no aircraft yet. That will be coming online later. Just an update with our VMPs, the local VMPs. We've been bringing the engines over from out of the area, and so we've been trying to complete the North Fork fuel break. We burned over 300 piles in three days of work with all those engines, so we're moving with that. And tonight I'm going to introduce Division Chief Ryan Woosner, and he's going to update on the fire hazard severity zone map and give you guys an update on that. Thank you.
Thank you chief.
Thank you all. Thank you for having me. If I'm supposed to read that, there's no chance I can see that up there, so. Fire hazard severity zones. Is everybody familiar with those? In the SRA, it's a map that was produced by the Office of the State Fire Marshal back in 91 after the Oakland Hills fire. And it's a map that covers all of California, and it demonstrates the hazards of wildfire and how it can propagate in certain areas of California. So it's moderate, high, and very high are the three listings, and then new to the maps was local responsibility area, which is LRA, which usually means local government or incorporated cities. So that's new to this map revision. So LRA is being graded in the fire hazard severity zone maps. Do you have a PowerPoint by any chance? Okay. That's all right. So what does that mean to the city of Colfax? So now the city of Colfax is being graded. Before, local government and the fire hazards, very zones would only go up to high. And now the city of Colfax in its entirety is being graded as a very high hazard severity zone, which is probably no shock to anybody in this room. With that, is there any questions or clarifications or what that means? Go ahead. Oh, hi Kathy. Yeah, sorry you were on that meeting. I wanted you to be on there and Dave's like, sorry about that.
Um, so I saw in July of last year, uh, fire map. Is that one still the one or has it been updated since last July?
Yeah, it just got updated and it just got sent out to the to the AHJs. It was it was sent out like on Valentine's Day. So what normally it should have went out to all of the elected officials, and then it would have went out to all the cities and city managers, then fire chiefs, and then and then it was going to go out to the fire marshals. But the governor decided to let it all out at the same time. So when you saw on the news that people were a little shocked about it, that's all. It just wasn't the normal process. So now we're going to go into the 45 day comments, and what it means is that the cities have to incorporate it as an ordinance. So once they create the ordinance, they'll accept the maps that the Office of the State Fire Marshal sent out, and then on the Board of Forestry on June 1st will adopt it and then upload it. Forty-five days. So it's pretty fast. And then I sent out a toolkit, so we have draft ordinances. And basically what this just means is that there's it goes federal, state, local government. So the state came out with a new law. Local government has to accept it in the form of an ordinance, and then that keeps you in line with all of the other regulations that involve like CECLs, 4290, 4291, Chapter 7A in the building code. And most of all, it allows you to receive FMAG money, so federal assistance monies for whatever projects or whatever monies that you're going after for the community. So hate to be the bearer of bad news, but it really does nothing for it doesn't change anything in this community. Everybody knows the hazard of the community. All it's doing is just reflecting that local government, LRA, is being graded as high and very high. So the same goes for Lincoln, Roseville, Loomis, and Rockland. They're all getting graded to the same. So when you look at your map or if you put your address into the fire hazard severity zone map, you can look up and see exactly where you're at. And if you have a parcel that's 30 acres and half of it's very high and the other half is just high, it defaults to the higher listing. So.
Everything within that parcel. Secondary access.
Correct. So it triggers the higher building codes or the more stringent building codes. So Chapter 7A, the building products for your house have to be non-combustible materials. The roads have to be a little bit wider. Secondary egress for or dead end road standards. So if you're doing more than 10 houses, then you have to have another way in, things like that. It depends on the lot. I mean, secondary egress is a part of it depending on how many houses per lot.
Sorry. We've been getting calls about a half acre parcel where they want to the 560 minutes and it's high density. And so I didn't realize it was 10 or more.
So half acre parcel will be 800 feet. So as long as they can get it in 800 feet, they're fine.
Okay.
Correct. Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Is anything going to be done locally where where I live, I'm right on the border of county city?
Mm-hmm.
And we have a lot of new people that have moved into the bar area that well, one of them, I like the thick pine needles on the ground because it looks pretty. And there's all these pine trees on the lot, and then in between the pine trees, he cut some of that hot pine and put it in between. On top of that, I'm looking at the thing in his house, you know, to top of that grade. And so I went over and I talked to Cal Fire and I said, are you guys going to be going around and kind of giving people like the clue of like, hey, you know, stupid, fuckin' fire hazard. And he said that they were just talking about it that morning.
Yeah.
So is something like that covered in the office where they're actually going to go educate people?
More so. So the law also triggers the AB 38 inspections. So anytime a house is bought or sold, it has to pass a defensible space inspection from the buyer to the seller as a notification. So that's one check. And then we also have our DSIs and and like Chief Seabert said that we'll be at full staffing March 17th. I think we have 13 of them, and they go all up and down county. So on some days, you know, they do, they can do up to 100 houses a day. So let's see, get their notices out.
You made a comment that, and I thought it was actually a good strategy that when they go to a person's home and they kind of friendly warm, you know, try to educate them, but that's documented.
Oh, yeah.
So that when they, you know, their house burns down, they go, geez, what happened? They can just tell the parents, get them to go and pull them.
And those same maps that you see on the viewer, if you go to fire.ca.gov, it's ArcGIS. So those inspections also upload into the same. So we pull data from that throughout the state.
There's an incentive to claim that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
I have one. If we're at the highest rate rating now, what were we before? Is that a change or?
Yeah, you went from red to fuchsia on the colors. It's you're high, you're just very high. So it's terminology. But the only thing that that triggers is, so if you're a very high SRA, it's the same requirements in LRA. So like we were speaking, the if you're going to build a subdivision, it's got to have bigger roads, secondary egress. The houses have to be made with fire resistant construction and things like that.
Could it affect insurance costs?
So that's what everyone thinks. So this this measures hazard. It doesn't measure risk. So the insurance companies measure everything with risk for their for-profit business, and they're using they're using different measuring sticks. They're using stuff that's way more technologically advanced than a hazard severity zone map. They're using LiDAR and satellites, and they're having boots on their ground, walk around the houses before they they determine if they're going to insure or not. Yes, sir. With the implementation of this law, is the state offering some kind of grant funding for homeowners to help them clean up? That that's the whole part. Clean up? Yeah, so there's good low cost, low cost retrofits are coming out also too. Okay. But they have to have something to go off of and determine who what areas get the low cost retrofits and all the grant funding from the feds and from the state. And one of the the points that the governor came up with was that the maps had to be updated. They hadn't been updated since 2007. So what they were showing in 2007 and what we're seeing like last summer is two different, two different things, so. So the city is going to see some FEMA money to hand out. We're in that process right now, but I was really interested if there's more state money to help our local citizens. Yeah, we just it's in the Office of State Fire Marshal. They just closed the job listing for the person that's going to run the low cost retrofit. And so it's going to be the dual pane windows, the decking, the soffits. What are the vents called? The vulcanized vents? Right, but will there be money for defensible space we're clearing? It's a good question. Okay. Can't answer that right now, but hopefully. Yeah. Yes, ma'am.
Chief, I had a quick question. You said the the new maps were still pending public comment?
Yeah, they're they're open for public comment because that's just the process of any new state law that comes out is open for public comment, and the Office of State Fire Marshal will collect all the comments, bring them in for for data and for advisory for anything else coming out after the fact.
Okay, so do you know if our, and I can look this up myself, but do you know if our deadline to adopt the ordinance is running yet, or do we wait for public comment to close and then adopt?
No, I believe you you I'll have to get back to you on that. I have, it was on it was on a PowerPoint.
Yeah, I understand. I'll look it up as well. Thank you.
But it's the the county is, I think, March 12th. So in a couple of weeks, the county is going to send out the maps that they've received, and I believe, did you have you received anything? Okay, so we'll look, we'll chase that down for you.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Any other questions? It doesn't go over addresses specifically. If you look at the maps, it's just colors, color coordination as it goes down that that deciphers the different levels of severity zone, but all of California is covered. Even the lakes are covered. The lakes are moderate. So just in case you have a houseboat out there, there's a risk. Just so, just for clarification, can a property owner request someone Cal Fire come out and do an evaluation? Anytime. Anytime. So yes, if you're in Shady Glen, you can request Cal Fire to come out, do an evaluation.
All right.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And nonprofits, do we have any nonprofits here to report tonight?
Hi, how are you tonight? Aaron Newington with the Historic Colfax Downtown Association. I wanted to present an idea to you tonight. I don't know if you're aware, but April is a arts, declared an arts culture and creative month through California and Placer County. And I wanted to propose that we make an arts month here in Colfax and leverage those efforts. I did a lot of research when I was doing the two-year strategic plan for the HCD, HCDA, excuse me. And what I learned was art is such a big part of bringing back a community, and it was a theme that ran through several cities. And I didn't really realize how important that was in revitalization, revitalization, revitalization in area. I could say that word. So I don't know if you know, but arts generate revenue, arts events. Typically, art attendees spend around $31 per event beyond the tickets. So they're flock shopping at local restaurants, shops, and staying at hotels. Thirty-four percent of all art attendees travel from outside the county, and so they typically spend twice as much as somebody who is local. Fourteen percent of non-locals attendees will stay overnight, which helps us fill the hotels and Airbnbs in the area. And they spend on average $161 per person on lodging. So art events definitely bring dollars to our city, and they attract people that wouldn't come. So because we can leverage the county level and the state level of of energy that's already happening around Arts Month, and if we can create an Arts Month in Colfax and put together several events, we can create a lot of energy that we can leverage off the other initiatives. And so we've put together a series of events that sorry, we put together a series of events that we think will help generate traffic to the area. It's really important for us to leverage our businesses and some of the assets that we have in town. So we have, we're working on an event at the Historical Fact Theater. We have some movement on that today. We are partnering with Jason over at Carosphere. He's going to be paying for a very popular band to come in and play. He is going to be doing thousands of dollars of marketing around that event, and we have worked with the businesses to make sure that they're open during that time so that they can benefit as well. And we also anticipate a lot of stay over, people staying over for that particular event. So we're really excited about that. We have a list of musicians that want to play. We have a lot of local talent. And so we were looking at how can we put an event together at the Art Park and like have an open mic type situation where we can see lots of different talent displayed. And I think it'll be a good draw for the city. And really, the the whole point of this is to create a series of events that will create energy that we could go out and promote Colfax with. We learned that the, I think it's the Historical Society has an open mic. Is that correct? Yeah, in April. Perfect. And I was really excited to hear about that, and that's basically a cultural event that's going to be talking about the history of Colfax and people sharing stories. So it fits right in with what I'm suggesting. The wrecking crew is going to be having a Sunday brunch paint day, so they're going to have bring people down on the Sunday, get them there downtown and celebrate by having some brunch and having a painting class. The Snap Dravagan is hosting an artist meetup, so we're super excited about that to bring you know, artists and share that community spirit. Another suggestion that we had was doing some kind of a sidewalk chalk art festival. So have the kids get involved and grab their chalk and start drawing on the, you know, the sidewalks, and we'll have to clean that up, of course, but I think it would be a super great draw for families because, you know, the bands and the certain activities will bring in the adults, but how can we support the families in town? And so we're super excited about making that a possibility. And one of the things that we really want to push forward is a mural project. We have identified several locations that we can put some murals, and we've identified artists that are willing to do that. We have to figure out where we're going to get the funds and what the process is to get that, something like that approved. But murals are something that are super important. One of the ideas was one of the ideas was the the alleyway. It's kind of dingy right now, I would say. And so how can we go in there and clean it up and put artwork on the back of the buildings with permission, of course, and see if we can get a draw there? One of the ideas that came up through the one of our community meetings was to have some kind of QR code affiliated, and we had talked about using an app before that I had learned about through the Placer County Arts Council that would allow somebody to scan the picture or scan the building and learn more about the history. So what we're asking is if we could get city level support, and if you would consider doing an official proclamation to make Colfax April Arts Creative, Arts Culture and Creative Month. And we're looking for the city to help us promote it through their social media channels, the Colfax connection and potential signage. And then we're just looking for possible logistics support, so helping us cut maybe some of the permit costs for some of these events and help out on an insurance level, if possible. I'm not sure if that is possible, but I wanted to throw it out there and then possibly see if we can get some funds to help pay for some of this. So, sorry, I can't breathe today.
All right, great. We can definitely look into that and probably have to bring it back for council discussion at the next meeting. That way we can.
Okay, I did provide a packet of information with data, case studies and all that. So I would love to come back and do a formal presentation if that's what it takes.
Yeah, that'd be great. Yeah, really excited to hear about all the stuff you guys got going on.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, are there any questions from the public or council? No? Okay. One, one question, sorry. We have.
Oh, we, thank you. I appreciate that. So we're having a meeting tomorrow night at this here community center at 6:00 PM. We're going to be talking about all these events. Who wants to volunteer for what? Who wants to charge the field in what direction? And if you are a musician or an artist and want to participate in any way, we'd love to talk to you.
Right. Any other nonprofits?
Hello.
Hello, everybody. I'm with Sierra Vista Community Center, and I have my proposal for each one of you. Do I hand this to you? Okay. This is the first time I have spoken, so I'm not sure if this is the right time. I think it is, but I think I would like to be put on the agenda maybe for next time to vote on my request. My name is Nicole Lesher, and I'm the garden liaison for the Outfielders Community Garden. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with all of you tonight. I'm here on behalf of Sierra Vista Community Center to request funding from the City of Colfax Nonprofit Fund in support of our upcoming Farm to Table fundraiser, which is in July this summer, 2026, I'm sorry, 2025 on the 26th. This event will benefit Outfielders Community Garden, which is dedicated to creating a welcoming space where individuals and families of Colfax can grow organic food, build strong community connections, and foster a deeper relationship with the land and the food we eat. So the Farm to Table Dinner is a fundraiser event focused on showcasing local farmers, chefs and businesses while bringing the community together around fresh, locally sourced food. This event not only is a fundraiser, but also an opportunity to highlight the importance of sustainable agriculture and community resilience. The funds we are requesting from the City of Colfax will directly support the event by covering essential costs such as sourcing local ingredients from farmers and producers in the region, renting necessary equipment, marketing and outreach efforts to ensure community participation, and supporting local chefs and food artisans preparing the meal. This fundraiser is an investment in Colfax's food ecosystem and strengthens community connections. The proceeds will go toward expanding the gardens programs, including increasing fresh produce accessibility for local families, offering educational workshops on gardening and sustainability, and providing volunteer opportunities and engagement programs. We kindly request a $500 donation from the City of Colfax Nonprofit Fund to help us meet our fundraising goals and ensure the success of this event. Your support will not only contribute to a wonderful evening, but also have a lasting impact on the community through our garden's continued work. Thank you for your time and consideration. I'd be happy to answer any questions and discuss how the City of Colfax can be further involved in supporting this initiative. We truly appreciate your commitment to fostering and thriving, fostering a thriving and connected community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions from the public?
Yes.
You got contact information?
Um, yeah, well, I'm doing all of the marketing, but yeah. You, you're the sign. You do the signs, right? The Colfax logo. Yeah. 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 You can reach out to me. I don't have a card, but I can give you my information. Okay. Any other questions?
Counsel?
Um, yeah, so when do ticket sales open and how much are we looking at or is that TBD?
Nope, tickets open. I already have a waitlist, so those people get to choose first if they get their tickets and tickets open hopefully in the next month, and it's $100 a ticket.
Any other questions?
I actually have one. What kind of body count are you looking for? Are you planning for 50 people, 100 people?
We're topping it at 30, so it's kind of an exclusive event.
Okay, that's what I was curious about. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, thanks, everybody.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other nonprofits tonight? All right, and we'll move on to item four, 4A. We have a presentation tonight from Doug York, Associate Engineer at Placer County Water Agency. He's going to update us on some projects that are going to be happening locally. Thanks for coming tonight, Doug.
Hello, thank you for having me here to present this to you. Like you said, my name is Douglas Shorke. I'm Associate Engineer with Placer County Water Agency and the Project Manager for the Shady Glen Consolidation Project. Like you said, my name is Douglas Shor. I'm Associate Engineer with Plaster County Water Agency and the Project Manager for the Shady Glen Consolidation Project and the Colfax Water Treatment Plant Replacement Project. This is an overview of the general area, the big red line going up and down through the middle of the, the image is I-80. The little red dots, the one directly in the center is where the existing water treatment plant is for the Colfax Water Distribution System. And the red dot up at the top of the image is where the future treatment plant will go. So one of the projects is the Shady Glen Consolidation Project. And the primary purpose of this is the, or the primary, yeah, primary purpose is to install roughly seventeen hundred feet of six and eighteen inch pipe from the northern terminus of the Colfax Water Distribution System around the Zarni Road along 174 up to the intersection of 174 and Rollins Lake Road and about fifteen hundred feet of that pipe is in the 174 right of way. The remainder of that runs across in the, in that empty field on the hill as you approach it. This is the, this project is happening because the owners of Shady Glen Mobile Home Park or Shady Glen Estates, they also own their own water treatment plant, which has been failing and they're new owners since Mr. Pennelli's passing a few years ago and are not prepared to invest in the upgrades and maintenance required to keep the Shaglin Community Water system up and running into the future. So they approached us and asked us to be consolidated with into the, into the PCWA's water system. And we are lucky that the state has provided us with funding for the entirety of the project. We've already selected the, we've already gone out to bid, the contractors, Loring Brothers Construction, they're local here in Colfax. So this is a map of the Shaglin Consolidation Project. Like I said, it's taking off from the northern terminus, the existing water system around the Zarni Road and extending up 174 to that parcel at the intersection of 174 and Rollins Lake Road. Where there will be traffic control for this project due to its location in the right of way. But there will always be one lane open throughout the entire project when there is work being done. And we're anticipating periodic closures from now through project completion at the end of June. The, our typical work hours are going to be eight to four thirty. We just got approval from Caltrans dictating that we are allowed to start the closure process at 8:00 AM. And the, the work hours are, the start is first cone down to last cone up, not setting up cones, working through that time and then taking cones down afterwards and freeing up traffic. So they will be completely out of the roadway after four thirty every day and will not be in it until after, before 8:00 AM to stay out of commute times. This is a overhead view of our existing Colfax Water Treatment Plant. It's pretty old. The agency, I believe, purchased it from PG&E in the mid fifties and I've heard from some of the older maintenance people that some of the concrete in the big basin in there is actually from around the time of the railroad getting landed. So it's a, it's, it was about time to just replace it and it's tucked up in town, above town. It is really hard to get to, so we decided on constructing it in a new location. So currently, the, the existing plant has 1.24 million gallons per day of production capacity. The storage tanks, two of which are above the treatment plant, up the hill above the treatment plant, and then one down by the ballpark, have a total of 1.9 million gallons of storage and the existing connections on the system are roughly a hundred, or nine hundred and seventeen. Once the new treatment plant is completed, the capacity will be expanded to two million gallons per day. We're not adding any additional storage at this point in time. And due to the consolidation of Shady Glen, will the number of connections will go up to about 1,040. We are also doing studies of regionalizing our water system between Colfax and Applegate. So we have designed the treatment plant to be expandable with adding one more treatment unit to three million gallons per day. We don't know what that entails for storage just yet. But across that region, there's up to about forty three hundred connections that we could consolidate. It's a voluntary process for consolidation. The total project cost for the treatment plant is $35 million and the construction cost is currently estimated at $28.6 million. This is a overhead view of the lot where the treatment plant will be constructed. Next slide. And then here's a render of what the completed treatment plant will look like. Again, this is from up in the air, so this is not going to be the typical view that everybody else sees. We have a, oh, there we go. No, it's okay. And this is a view looking from across the street near the Shady Glen Mobile Home Park towards it. We've included in the design to add plenty of vegetation along the frontage to try and help screen the treatment facility from the public's view. So as I had mentioned, the existing plant is approaching its end of life and by expanding it to two million gallons, we have room for all the consolidations that are underway and future consolidations further down the line over the next couple of decades. So the tentative schedule for that is we are opening bids next Friday, March seventh. If everything goes well with the opening of bids, we intend to award the contract for construction April third. We will issue a notice to proceed on April twentieth. And then we, we also expect there's some administrative and procedural stuff that happens before actual groundbreaking will occur in late quarter two, early quarter three of this year. So around June, June, July timeframe. And then it's a two and a half year construction window and will be completed in quarter four of 2027. This is, as I had mentioned, that we have a regionalization effort happening. The state has funds to help us and other water, water purveyors to consolidate your systems, provide administrative and maintenance and operational efficiencies. And due to the nature of it being a mountainous region, everything kind of goes down the hill from here towards the valley. That's, that's my last slide. Or and then because we're getting state funding for both of these projects, I have to include this language on the screen. Thank you. Is there any questions?
Great. Thank you. Any questions from the public?
Water is going to go into people's houses for the.
Drinking water. Plaster County Water Agency only deals with drinking water. Yes, it does. That's that's the intent of it. Increasing it to two million gallons is that 1.24 is all dedicated already for the City of Colfax. And then the two million is to accommodate things like consolidation of Shady Glen. I'm can't, off the top of my head, I couldn't read the next closest one.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
So what are the plans for the old location?
We will be decommissioning it and just closing the valves and turning it off. Yeah. We have, there's no intent to demolish it as part of this project or turn it into any sort of other thing. So it'll, it might end up eventually becoming a project of its own to, to get rid of it, so.
I have one. I wonder if you could clarify the traffic control. There's a little inconsistency there in my mind. It says one lane to remain open.
Yes.
Which means somebody standing there, right? You know, to allow cars to go in either direction. I know there's a lot of traffic on that road. It says periodic closure. Does that mean periodic closure of one lane or periodic closure of both lanes?
It's periodic closure of one lane.
Okay, thank you.
Kim, question?
Okay, we lost our swimming pool recently, so can we turn this into a swimming pool? Waiting pool?
No, no comment.
That, that'll be part of future negotiations for the site. All right, any other questions? No? All right. Doug, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now we will move on to item five, public hearing. We do have one public hearing tonight and it's a hearing on the new sidewalk repair and maintenance liability ordinance. City player, would you please introduce this item?
Good evening. I'm Kathy Pease, Planner with the City. I'm here tonight bringing back this item. The council has considered this a couple of times in the past. As a reminder, the State of California already requires adjacent property owners and indicates that it's their obligation to repair a defective sidewalk. This goes back to 1924 and then in 1935, the state again supported this approach with Assembly Bill 1194. So it's been on the books a long time. A majority of cities have already adopted sidewalk ordinances. We are coming forward with this ordinance to make it not only clear, but it also has some advantages because we have indicated when it's the city's responsibility to repair the sidewalk. So last time the city considered this back in January, the council had some additional revisions to again make clarifications. And the revisions that were requested back in January include adding language to clarify if any damage is caused by a city tree that the city will perform the repair. Define what a city tree is and what a privately owned tree is. And then define the responsibility for repair caused by a city action such as snow plowing. So we've made some revisions and that is in our packet to the ordinance. And so tonight, again, we are introducing the proposed ordinance and asking the council to consider adopting this sidewalk ordinance. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to help.
Thank you, Kathy. And I will go ahead and open the public hearing and we will go ahead and take comments from the public. All comments are going to be limited to five minutes of the interest everyone's time.
It might take longer than five minutes.
Oh, too bad.
I don't know if the revisions were written about like the tree and stuff like that, but I haven't seen that. But I do have some questions that you actually read the state law, the fifty six ten, the whole thing? Part of that ordinance.
Exactly a quarter inch. Their sidewalk stays up higher than that. It has to be repaired.
Don't trip on it.
I think the reason this is happening is the city just flat can't afford to maintain their sidewalks. It's the same thing that happened with swimming pool. They said, well, they're sliding down the hill. Well, that's not true. It was taken out because they couldn't maintain it. And to drain it, they couldn't leave it empty, so they took it out. It's the same thing you're trying to do with the sidewalks. The city can't afford to maintain the sidewalks, so they're going to throw it on the people. Half of this town, if not more, don't have sidewalks. So houses that butt up to the city street basically aren't going to be taxed like the rest of us that have a sidewalk. I have to maintain that sidewalk. And he doesn't. Well, it seemed to me that's kind of like discrimination. I'm being taxed, he isn't. The payment for repairs is comes, it comes down to one person. The inspector. He's the one that says everything has to be fixed. It's not up to you guys. It's up to him. And you're given a certain number of days to take care of this. If you don't take care of it, the city will take care of it and bill you. The fifty six ten goes on and on and on, not just a quarter inch high, three quarter inch gap. And I had to look up this one word, spalled. A half inch spalled. What that is, is a pitted or cracked area. So anything over a half inch on the sidewalk, you have to repair that also. And it has to be done within a certain amount of time or you're going to be billed the city cost. There's on Forest Hill Street where I, I live, there's a sidewalk there. Well, you're supposed to call it a sidewalk. A sidewalk legally has to be forty eight inches. The, a walkway is thirty six inches. The sidewalk in front of my house is thirty five inches. So there has to be every, I think it's twenty feet, twenty five feet, something like that, a turnout area for handicap people or two people to walk beside each other. So every so feet, you have to have these concrete turnouts. On my sidewalk, it's, I'm not even sure it belongs to the city. The, the concrete itself is actually a different color than anywhere else in this town. And it actually goes through the middle of my property beside my house to my garage, around the back door and up to the alley in the back. If you were to look at city records, I'm sure that you would find Gibbs, Redolphy, Sturgill, West, Barnes. All these people, these houses have been there for almost a hundred years, some of them over a hundred years. Mine in two years will be a hundred years. I would be willing to bet those people put that sidewalk in. The city didn't. There's a gap between the sidewalks that goes to the street. I have never, and I'm seventy six years old, I have never seen a city maintenance person take care of any of that area. And it runs the entire length of South Forest Hill Street. So is it actually city property? There's a wall from the road. There's a wall that's made out of quartz rock. It came from the Rising Sun Mine. You won't see another wall. You won't see another wall built out of that anywhere in this town. Those people along that street built it. So is it actually city property? I don't know. I can go on and on, but apparently my time has run out.
I apologize. Well, see if we can address your comments a little bit later in this process. Any other public comment? No?
A lot of what Mike has said is, is very, very important. Bill Bean, if you don't know, City Colfax. How have you notified all the property owners that this was going to happen? I think I happened to be talking to Larry at a basketball game. I didn't know it was going to happen. So I don't know why this all of a sudden is this, this big rush that we have to have all this done. You're talking, your home's going to be a hundred years old. Mine's built in eighteen seventy. I have no idea how old that sidewalk is in front of my house. Been there a long time. And I do have a big tree. It's over a hundred years old. It's a black walnut tree. Guess what? It damaged the sidewalk. I've owned the house for thirty five years. It's always been damaged. You've never been able to walk across that sidewalk, but all of a sudden now we have to get people to walk on that sidewalk. The only time I see anybody on my sidewalk is on Halloween. If I were to walk out of downtown here and walk up Culver, there's a sidewalk goes all the way up to the other church on top. My side, it starts on Oak, goes to Schultz, then you have to go up and then you have to go up to where the old Erickson house is, I don't know who's living there now, but it's, it's well off the pavement. Are we going to have to put a ramp in there? Because you're going to have to, you're going to want wheelchair people to be able to use that and get up that sidewalk. Because then they can go all the way to the end of that, to the end of his house. Well, then it stops. You can't go on that pine. City went in there and did all that road and put all the curbings in, there's no sidewalks. Where are they going to go? But we have to repair them and we have to have them done right. So is my option is to say, look, it's going to cost me around $5,000, $4,500 to $5,000 to repair my sidewalk. By the way, part of my sidewalk, which was the only good part that was in, my neighbors in mind. Here again, like Mike says, I don't know when it was put in, a long, long time ago. The city or whoever they hired to come out and do the sewers parked in my front yard. I was supposed to sign a piece of paper saying they had my permission to do that. I'd never signed it, dug up my front yard to work on the sewer. So they put their big outriggers down, broke up the sidewalk, which was in perfect shape. I complained about it, they go, nah, it was always that way. It was that way when we got here. I can measure the outriggers, I can show you exactly where they broke that sidewalk. So now I guess it's my responsibility to replace all that sidewalk. Then we got Wendy Eddy here, right on the corner. Picket fence, right down from the post office. City trees, and you're going to talk about city trees, whether they've damaged it. Is she going to be responsible for at least half of that? Because the city's trees have damaged that, and here again, that sidewalk's been in there for many, 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 many years. I, I just think we're getting way overboard on trying to make the person that owns that property at this point, they have to pay for the sidewalk. No matter what. And I did read the whole leg of California cities and they do say, doesn't matter who did it. City did it, doesn't matter, you're responsible. One, I think that's very, very wrong. And I think we need to rethink about what we're doing here tonight. And this 90 day notice? All of a sudden they give you 90 days to get this done? Not going to happen. Oh, and I was, I was talking to some friends tonight and they're talking about the sidewalk over here on, is that East Oak, the Catholic Church? Who did that sidewalk? Was that the city or did church put it in or did the church in the mobile home park put it in?
The city put that in as part of the road improvements we did over there.
What happened?
The city put that in as part of the road improvements.
Okay.
As again, anywhere we're doing roads, we have to bring up the sidewalks to code so that there's walking and bike access now. That's part of the state requirements for funding.
If you improve the road, you have to put in sidewalks. Well, they improved Culver, did they put in sidewalks?
We had, we had to redo the corners and we actually kind of finagled that a little bit so that
So we didn't, we didn't improve the sidewalks, even though you improved the road.
Yep, so that, it will, we, we were able to meet code with the way we did the paving to not have to
Meet code, okay.
Improve sidewalks, so.
In other words, some people can get their sidewalks replaced and other in the town will get their sidewalks replaced. That one of the biggest ones is going to be right here on the corner, David's sitting right back there right now. Going all the way up out of town, across from the boat shop. One, it's narrow, it's going to have to be wide, it's going to cost a fortune. I guess my time's up. I could really keep going on with this. I think you guys are getting way, way out of hand on trying to force this down our throat. And I don't think it has to be that way. So we have to come up with another, another, another way to do it.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this item?
My name's Dave Stokel. I've had business in this town for 30, 30 years, boat shop, I own number nine depot. Sidewalk there is totally illegal. Can, it's not even close to being ADA agree, you know, doable. Half this town, 90% of this town is not ADA admissible. So if you have to repair it, how do you do it when you can't even do it to ADA standards? He was talking a quarter inch per foot, that's quarter inch per foot off to the side, you can go one inch per foot on a ramp. No, nothing on Main Street is legal, nothing, not at all, anywhere. And it's been there 100 years. That building that I own is, is, I got pictures of it well over 100 years ago. It needs to be repaired and I agree. And I, in fact, I even offered to do it eventually when you guys were going to redo the downtown area, but that never happened. Okay, change everything, I said, you know, I'll finish up that and make the sidewalk, but I still, there's, there's cracks everywhere on Main Street, up across from the boat shop, sidewalks this wide. There's no, and people live in houses there. They, you know, it's not ever going to be legal. And the, the biggest thing is, is I just heard about this from Bill Bean two days ago. And I just talked to Paul on the way down here and told him what was going on, he owns Corner Store. Nobody even knows what's, nobody's told any of the business owners what's going on even here. You know, our property owners, I should say. And, you know, that's, you know, the way this thing is, is going is, is nuts. And that's about all I can say right now.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Good day. Harry Anderson, I had no idea I was going to talk about sidewalks tonight, believe me. But I grew up in Southern California in the beautiful little town of Burbank. And I remember the home that my folks bought that was built in 1947 had sidewalks. And it also had a tree in the parkway that was gigantic. And somehow, some way it had broke the sidewalk and she called, my mother called and complained. And the city came out and the city took the tree down and the city repaired the sidewalk and did all that stuff. It had nothing to do with us. And my own personal experience, I haven't lived in a house with a sidewalk since I left Southern California. We're historic Colfax. Isn't there some get out of jail card or something to leave the sidewalk like it's been for 100 years? I mean, what, what the hell? I don't understand why, I don't see that many people walking around anyway in the first place. And most of them, if they're walking anywhere, it's downtown on Main Street. Or the kids on skateboards and I, I think they like the challenge of having sidewalk that's a space and jump off and all that stuff. I, I don't get it, why the, and if somebody moves here and bitches about the sidewalk, well, they should have known about it being historic before they bought the damn house. I mean, I don't get it. It's, it seems like we're, we're trying to, like I heard somebody who moved up here that they wanted to pave all, excuse me, concrete all of Main Street out here and turn it into a amphitheater like Los Gatos. I said, well, if you like Los Gatos that much and they have that, then move there. That's not what we're about, we're a railroad town, that's the theme of this town. And that's what we should be trying to maintain is the look. We only have four square miles to work with, for God's sake. And we're right off the freeway and we're dying. We got to get this historic brand of Colfax up and running and it will work. But we're going in all these different directions to satisfy a governor and we hope the hell he's gone. I mean, it's just crazy to me. You know, I mean, part of the charm is you drive down by Dave's boat shop and you look at the houses on across the street from you and the sidewalks are whatever they are and so is the fence, whatever they are. And that's part of being an old historic town. So whoever's pushing us to do this, like the Italians say, you know, it's over.
Hey, Eric. He had another minute, so. It's all right, well, just start, start the clock. Go ahead, Bill.
I don't know if the board is aware that if you get to the top of Culver, it turns into pine. There's a set of stairs that go all the way up. Okay, who owns those stairs?
It's a great question.
Anybody know? And somebody else, I believe that she was in here, she may be over there. I came into the city one time and I said, and I had the plot map. I said, who owns these two strips of property going right up here next to my rental up to the Lincoln? And she said, that'd be the city of Colfax. Wes came out of his office and he goes, you told him? Yeah, I didn't think it was funny, you told him? It was going to be a secret. I don't know if you guys are aware, the railing shot on it?
Yeah.
You could step off, but somebody could get injured, are you going to take care of it?
Sounds like you do.
But for him to tell me that, oh, you told him? Yeah, that was not
Thank you. Any more public comment?
Zach LaFerriere, resident of Colfax. I have no dog in the fight. The house that I own, which is near downtown, it just happens to have no sidewalk. However, I do, I am getting the sense as you guys that people are feeling very rug pulled on this. So I'm just throwing out two potential options that you guys might consider before passing the ordinance. And one might be it's, if you're, it's a grandfathered in clause where change of ownership takes on, new owners take on liability for their and I have no idea, I asked Ms. Pease if she happened to know of any cities that might have enacted this, but this is, this would be our ordinance. We could do whatever we want and the wording is completely up to us. The second option would be something, something similar, but it would be more of a grace period. Rather than this immediate rug pull or wow, you've got 90 days to come into compliance. It would be, hey, on this date and time, which might be two or three years out from now, people have the ability to save. My wife and I oftentimes look at Colfax and wish people would invest a little more into the look of their home and the maintenance of it to bring that charm and appeal that this city has. However, if they're dumping money into just maintaining an almost forced fee to update sidewalks that they received broken. If you were to buy something and then all of us, you know, like the sidewalk in front of you, if you guys aren't going to bring it into compliance, but you're going to penalize homeowners, I think that's, I don't feel like that's the community relationship that we're going for. So I'm hoping maybe we could tailor this ordinance to be more palatable for, for people who do want to invest in, in, in our community. All right, that's all I had to say. Thanks, guys.
Zach, you have a really great point about it being our ordinance and we can put whatever we want in it. And on that point, I am dying to respond to everybody and I'm waiting very patiently, so.
Yeah, please come up.
My name is Deborah Frankel. I live across the street from the post office. I've lived in Colfax for about three years. I don't come to every meeting, but I usually try to have, I have the, the agenda emailed me and I usually look at that and see if there's anything on the agenda that's something I might want to find out about. And so I had a couple of days of advance warning that there was going to be some discussion of a sidewalk ordinance and what was going to be in it. And I was able to come to the January meeting where this was discussed and I came with a question. First, I went out and looked at our sidewalk and there was a place, most of it looks pretty good, but at, right at the corner of the property, there, the, this particular sidewalk is lifted by some tree roots. So I came to the meeting and I asked, okay, there's something in here about city trees and, 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 and trees that are owned by the property owner. And I said, does, so I asked, does Colfax have a record of which trees are city trees? Or in which case it would be the city's responsibility to do something about it? And I see that in the, they, there wasn't a definite answer given me then, but I see that this ordinance has been revised and it has a definition of what a city tree is and it's, and you don't have to go back to the records, you go and measure the trunk of the tree. So it's pretty clear cut. So I just, while other people have, I just wanted to express my appreciation for the fact that my question was answered and that something has been changed in the ordinance to reflect the concern that I had. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment?
Before. And a simple solution to this might be to contact the high school and have them see if they can set up some kind of like an after class class or, or something like the Lions Club or something like that that they have out there to teach these kids how to write grants. Seriously, if they can write a grant, even if it's denied, they're learning something that they could use in their life forward. Or if the city helps them, then, and a grant comes through, the school can get some money, the city can get some money. It's not going to cost us anything and the kids are learning something. You know, somebody needs to go out and have a chat.
Tom, you got a comment? I'm ready.
Good evening, Tom Parham, I live on West Oak Street and I don't have a dog in this fight either, I have no sidewalk. But this gentleman brought something up about when the house is sold, that that would be the proper time to fix sidewalk. We had the same issue with our lateral sewer lines. We had to get the laterals fixed and the city made an ordinance upon sale of the house, it has to be inspected and repaired. So I'm thinking that might be the way to go.
Thank you. All right, do we have any other public comment on this item tonight? No, nothing online? Looks good, awesome. Okay, then I will close the public hearing and bring it back to council for questions and comments. Start with Kim.
I'm being patient and kind of being patient.
I like the former sheriff's idea of on a sale of a house or getting a grant. That way we can kick the problem down the street. In hopes it doesn't get caught in a crack. That's all.
Larry? Larry? About one question. And first off, I need to go back and I scanned through the state law, I need to read the whole thing. Because I missed the one quarter inch. And when we walk the sidewalks in this town in that consideration of only one quarter inch, we're going to have to fix them all, seems like to me. But the other thing, I wasn't, it's not really clear to me, the definition of a city tree. It says within the public right of way along a city street. And I'm not really sure what that means. Is that the, the ground between the street and the sidewalk or what, what is the public right of way?
Typically, yes, for a city street, it's outside the edge of pavement. There might be right of way that goes beyond the edge with the curb.
Okay.
It can be up to six feet under a property line typically.
And the reason for that is so that utilities can come in and put their utilities within that.
Okay. And then the other, one other question I have is, is repair the only option? I mean, the state dictated this 90 years ago. And we really can't change what the state said, we can only create our own ordinances in between what the state said. But is the only option to fix it or, you know, dare I say, can you just dig it up? That's a serious question. I mean, what?
So I am in the planning realm, I'm not an engineer, you know, this is kind of outside my wheelhouse, but I do do a lot of ordinance amendments. So that's, that's why I'm bringing it forward for you. that's why I'm bringing it forward for you. So maybe Ron, um, do you have any expertise in that? So I don't have an answer on that.
I'll note that the definition of repair in the ordinance includes removal.
What, what is the distance between the center of the road? Out the city has.
It's not the same for every road. It depends on whether, what the classification is because there are some roads are arterial roads, some roads are, um, what we call capillary roads, depending on what kind of road the California vehicle code has some say in it. Um, I wouldn't be able to tell you off the top of my head for any particular road because I'm not that bright. But, um, there, there is a specific width that we probably should ensure we have a map of just for people's knowledge. And the thought process behind measuring the tree trunks, for anyone who's curious, is to determine the age of the trees, um, so that we can kind of make that determination of, hey, if this is an older tree, clearly the property owner didn't put that there and therefore the city would be responsible. So that's kind of where that comes in. In, in, in the more extreme cases, yes. I hope that helped answer that question. I know that wasn't great, but.
Yeah.
So, um, the comments I wanted to make, I, I wanted to share a little history here for folks that may or may not be aware of, or maybe joining this conversation late. But the improvements act of 1911 is what kicked all this off. Okay? There was an amendment in 1941 that specifically added section, uh, 5610, which is the beginning of the sections that we've been speaking about here. Um, 5610 through, I believe, 5618 are the sections of the California vehicle code that pertain to our conundrum here that we're trying to solve. And when you first start at the very beginning, it's very clear that the owners of lots or portions of lots fronting any portion of a public street shall maintain any sidewalk in such condition that the sidewalk will not endanger persons or property and maintain it in a condition which will not interfere with the public convenience in the use of those works. And so in 1941, they placed the burden on the property owners. It's at the state law level. And the issue with that is that now we've been found in a situation where if somebody gets hurt, if somebody complains, the city is forced under a duty to respond where we're required to go forward to the property owner and enforce that this law is, is complied with. And where it became important for us to go ahead and move forward with an ordinance, making better boundaries and really pulling back that responsibility from property owners in such a strict manner was because we did get a number of these complaints. And that actually did result, as many of you guys have seen of that remediation on Main Street, right there at the corner of Depot by Luminaris. As you all know, Joe Fattula owns that portion, that lot there, the empty lot directly next to his storefront. And so he was required by law to mitigate that sidewalk. And that was a painful process that honestly could have been handled better if we had had an ordinance in place to allow the flexibility for him to, one, work with the city on reasonable solutions and, and reasonable, uh, parameters around what that repair looked like, rather than deferring to state law. The way it generally works is we have the ability in our ordinances sometimes to create rules and boundaries that go beyond the state law that protect our citizens and place responsibility on the government. And in the case of this ordinance, that's actually what we're doing. We are not adding any additional new burden to the property owners. In fact, what we are doing in many cases here is actually rolling back the burdens that currently exist by putting rules on the city saying that we have to give you 90 days to respond. We have to engage in a good faith collaboration effort with you. We have to give you options on how to perform that repair. And those are a number of things that we deliberated about on this ordinance in great detail because like many of you who got up here today, every single one of our council members, I think voiced very strongly are discontent with the current state law and the burden that it puts at any drop of a dime on that property owner if someone trips and falls. And the last thing that I want to see is somebody who is barely able to pay their property taxes for a home they've lived in forever. Suddenly if someone trip and fall in front of their house and be told that if you don't pay the several thousand dollars to remediate the sidewalk, that you're, you're going to have a tax lien on your house that you already can't afford. That's not okay. We don't live in a community that can sustain that. And a big motivator for this ordinance was to protect the citizens who live here from that drop of a hat requirement for large expenditure. Uh, part of the boundaries that we put into the ordinance allow for, um, remediation that does not include a full restoration of these sidewalks. So we did negate some of those quarter inch on grade requirements that are currently in the state law's expectation by setting our own expectations for what we consider a reasonable repair. And so by creating these additional flexibilities, we've also given people the opportunity to work with us in good faith to figure out what's reasonable for their situation as opposed to having a blanket solution that places a, an arbitrary burden on everybody. Um, and I hope that that helps because knowing that we've already had people have to go through this negative experience and that we're trying to do something about it, that's why we're pushing to get this done. Because when the next liability comes up, we don't want there to be ambiguity of, is it the city's responsibility? Is it your responsibility? We feel very important, it, it is very important that especially because if you look at our sidewalks, 90% of the major damage is caused by city, city trees. And as it stands right now, we haven't taken responsibility for that. So this ordinance puts us in a position to where, you know, if we are receiving these complaints and somebody gets hurt and it turns out it was a city tree that caused the damage, it's putting that obligation back on us to come out and make sure we've done our job rather than expecting the property owner to mitigate something they had nothing to do with. Um, and so I, I just hope that that context kind of helps us frame the conversation as we go forward because we've gone through several revisions of this ordinance because, I mean, even the last meeting Larry pulled it one more time because we had made some very specific requests in order to favor the constituents rather than the city. And so I think that, you know, that really shows when you go through and you actually read the content of the ordinance versus the state laws that stands today. So that, that's just my little input. I wanted to make sure throughout there and make sure folks have that history.
Two quick points, um, very, very well said. Thank you. Um, we also included at your request an appeals, um, provision as well. So if people get a notice, there is an appeal process. You can come to city council and voice your case. Um, so that's in here as well. And as Trinity said, I believe this is the fifth time we've been here. So I know some folks just found out about it. But we have noticed in the paper over and over. I think I originally came in November. We've been to council, November, December, January, and now, um, the end of February with this, so.
And, and just one last point on that. Um, one of the things we've talked about in the last couple of meetings as well is the public noticing requirements. One of the things that I think a lot of towns and, and just our bigger government issue as a whole is the lack of bandwidth that the average person has to engage in the civic process. How many of you actually have time to sit and read every agenda that comes out? I don't see a lot of hands up right now. I see one. Okay? It's a lot of work. It really is. And unfortunately, the amount of decisions that happen behind this dais at every given meeting, it's, it's an astronomical amount. And that's why you elect representatives to do that work for you. When it comes to things like this, while it may seem like, you know, sending direct notices to each individual property owner may have a, a benefit of calling to attention. If we were to do that for things that this drastically affect every property owner, unfortunately, we would be sending an astronomical amount of messages in the mail to you on top of all of the other noticing requirements. Um, but it would be a major tax expenditure and burden. And it would more than likely create, uh, notice fatigue. Just like we currently have with the emails, with the agendas and, and all the other material. So I would say, you know, to the best of everyone's abilities, it's really important that we all take our own personal responsibility over our civics and our government very seriously. And I think those that have shown up today are doing exactly that. And it's extremely important that we have these tough conversations about getting clarification, talking through it, sharing ideas. I love that people who came up here who were critical had ideas to share because that speaks volumes to the fact that people are coming here with being solution oriented and being part of the, being part of the positive change of our community, rather than just being stagnant and, and complaining about it. So, you know, that's huge. Um, and if there are some great ideas that people have to drive up public engagement, I really do feel like maybe we need to have, um, you know, some kind of a forum to start pulling people in or, I don't know, make this sexier in some way to where people want to pay attention to government because, you know, the number of decisions that affect your everyday life that happen at this level of government, it's scary when you think about how few votes it takes to get into one of these seats. And then the fact that you don't only make decisions at this level, ordinances, things that become expensive, you make decisions at a county level, a regional level, and in some cases even a state and federal level. So it's just something to consider about, you know, the, the amount of power you give people with your vote and how important it is to stay engaged.
Thank you, Trinity, for breaking that down. Got it out. All right, go ahead.
Really hard show to follow, right? No, I'm, Trinity actually brought up a whole bunch of the stuff that I was thinking of and Kathy, you did too. And that was the one thing I was going to highlight is that it's not just a 90 days, you better be done or you're going to get in trouble. There's absolutely verbiage in here to be able to work with the city, come to the council if needs be, get an extension. It's not a 90 days hard limit whatsoever. So we absolutely wrote this and I think Kathy probably did two revisions at least on that part of making sure that we could be flexible with all of the property owners in what kind of work, who does it, how long you have to do for it, how it could get paid for, all of those things. So there's definitely lots of flexibility that we tried to build into it to be able to deal with everything on a case by case basis if needs be.
Thank you. Yeah, um, we're really trying to make this as easy for the property owners as we can. Uh, we don't, I know we definitely don't want to see this be a penalizing thing. Now, we all know that the vast majority of our sidewalks are never going to meet ADA compliance. And we did put that in here so that meeting ADA compliance is not going to be the homeowner's burden. We don't want any of that. And I, the type of repairs we're talking about that we expect the homeowner, homeowner to take care of are minor leveling, things like that. Anything beyond that where it's replacing large sections, that's, that's something the city's going to evaluate and be looking to take care of because odds are it's been damaged either by city neglect, city work or city trees. Um, and for every property owner, they all have the ability to come to council, uh, do the appeals process or even just, just bring it up to us if, if you've been asked by the city, you know? We all, we're all reachable. And I'm hoping that future councils that deal with this will be on the same, on the same, uh, idea that, uh, this isn't supposed to be penalizing. We're, we have to put this in, we need to be caught up on this. We need to separate this liability and we need to make it as easy on the homeowner as possible so that it's, it's a, the city's working together with the homeowner. We don't want to put anybody in a burden for a damaged sidewalk that's been there for a hundred years. Um, and especially with the ADA compliance and all the new rules and things like that. I mean, a lot of these sidewalks were just, just put in, just by the homeowner originally anyway, or by the developer or something like that when the area is developed because it was a city requirement. Um, there's very few sidewalks that the city put in themselves without another development going in or something like that. Um, so most of these sidewalks were put in privately, but are part of the city. So we're going to definitely make sure that the direction is clear on, um, how we're approaching getting these notices out and how, um, how we go through this process. So that's, it's, yeah, it's so that it's easy enough for the property owner to get it taken care of. I mean, we have options. We have people we can, you know, um, we have help. We can get to property owners and stuff like that beyond just, uh, the city's going to replace this section because it needs ADA compliance or something like that. So hopefully we've answered most of the questions. Just a quick thing. No. So this, we, we, for this, we follow the same public notification process that we do for all, every ordinance. Uh, it's a legally required process. We have to give certain notification. We have to do multiple readings. Uh, and we have to have public hearings every time we change something and, uh, we present a new ordinance, so.
Well, it's also posted on our door when the, once it gets noticed, we can email it out. It's also, we put it at the post office. It's also at the post office that it's posted as well.
And the newspaper, we do a newspaper.
Yeah, in the newspaper. So, uh, we do what we're required to, to get it out as much as possible.
I think to Diane's question though, and maybe counsel, we can consider, you know, maybe making a specific agenda item of it later. It's a great question that we should explore. How do, how are we reaching the public on a regular basis and making sure they're engaged? Right. It's a great question. I think it deserves our attention and follow-up, um, because obviously there is a better way we could be doing things. And we need to schedule some time to figure out solutions and implement them. Well, there's a lot of cleanup to do.
Yep. All right. Um, if there's nothing else from the council and no other comments, then, uh, can I get a motion? Uh, to approve or whatever we want to do.
I would move that we waive the first reading. Um, this is still the first reading because the substance of changes. I would move that we waive the first reading and, um, proceed forward with the adoption.
Okay. Uh, can I get a second or another motion?
I'll second it.
Oops, sorry.
All right, uh, all in favor? Hi. 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 Okay.
Still another reading.
Yep, there's still another reading and we can still bring this back for additional comments or changes or whatever and have another public hearing, go back over.
Yeah. So now's the time to tell all your friends that this is going to come up again, whether it's in two weeks or in a month. I don't know. We'll see. But there's still another round to go.
Come pack it and make us not want to vote on it.
Bring them on.
Pack it in. We'll cycle everybody through. Stay here till midnight. That's fine.
I was going to say, I'll, I'll increase the cookie count, so.
To help encourage people.
That's right. Why do you think I do this?
We don't really have a whole lot. All right, uh, we're going to go ahead and move on to item six, uh, public comment. Every resident has the opportunity to address the council for comment with, uh, the appropriate time for public comments called. You may speak, uh, on any items not on the agenda. And the council cannot act on these items, uh, that are unincluded on the agenda. However, these items will be referred to staff and can come up on a future agenda. Uh, if you have any public comment, please come to the podium, uh, speak clearly and, uh, everybody gets five minutes. Any public comment tonight? Sorry, Chris. I, I have your, your paper. I meant to call that first.
Uh, Deborah Frankel again. Uh, so I'm here tonight and I'm planning to go to the, uh, uh, historic Colfax meeting, uh, tomorrow night. And I have, I got a notice, uh, that there's going to be a, an extra special meeting here Friday, on Friday night, starting at 5:00 PM. That's three meetings in a row. That's kind of a lot to expect even for a retired person like me. And so I, I'm wondering whether you could, if it's not an emergency situation, whether you might consider rescheduling that, uh, that discussion or special meeting or whatever it is uh, with a little bit more notice instead of having it on Friday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, Chris.
Chris McNabb. Um, I kind of second Deborah's motion there. That was, um, I think that's important to give it some time. So everyone that wants to weigh in on that can. Um, but with that being said, I'm, I just want to say again, um, I'm, I'd like to request that the old public seating area be removed or moved out from in front of our business. public seating area be removed or moved out from in front of our business in the meantime. Until this can be decided upon. It directly affects our business every day. So that's all. I just wanted to put that out there again, real quick. And thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes.
I have a public comment on behalf of Mike Costa, who's the principal transportation planner for Placer County Transportation Planning Agency. Right now, Placer County Transportation Planning Agency, or PTCPA, is currently leading the preparation of a short range transit plan or SRTP in partnership with the Regions Three Transit Operators, Auburn Transit, Placer County Transit, and Roseville Transit, and other transportation stakeholders. The SRTP aims to jointly implement the recently adopted service plans for each operator following the completion of the Comprehensive Operational Analysis Transit Planning Work last year and achieve more, excuse me, achieve a more coordinated and integrated transit network in the South Placer region, which includes the city of Colfax. A SRTP survey is currently available for public input through March 28th and can be accessed online Upon completion of the survey, residents may enter to win one of four $50 Safeway gift cards for their participation. If you have any questions, you can contact Mike Costa, who again is with PTCPA at mcosta@ptcpa.net.
Thank you.
Amanda, can you put a post on our Facebook with the links to that? Because most people won't write that.
Yeah, I can put links to that. And for anybody here that wants it, there are flyers up there with all the information.
Thank you.
Any other public comment tonight? Nope. All right. Great. We'll move on to item seven, council and staff business, uh, reports. Uh, Kim, you got anything?
Okay, a little bit. Uh, last week in Auburn, I attended Placer Earth Care Action. That's a group that's environmentally concerned. And there was a seminar and an hour and a half of videos put on by Recology showing how plastics and glass from our area are being recycled. So there's, uh, they don't all go to the ocean. Most of them still do, but at least some of them are being recycled. And then last night, I and a couple others I see here, we're at the first annual game night in the second floor of uh, Main Street and it was well attended. So we're coming out of our COVID cocoon. So it's good to see a full house on the second floor. Thank you.
I have nothing to report, but I would like to say that I'm a real basketball fan and watching especially the Colfax girls play basketball is a great way to spend an evening and there's, they're playing for the section championship in a division of larger schools than themselves on Friday down at Golden One Arena. It would be worth going to. Uh, second thing, I was, I was out of town the last time there was a meeting regarding downtown. And I'm really pleased that what Erin is doing. I mean, I, I kind of cut that off by encouraging a, a brainstorming session through the chamber. And I love the way it's going and I'm absolutely going to attend tomorrow. I have nothing more to report.
Trinity?
So for PCTPA, it sounds like Mike Costa did my job on my report out from our meeting this morning. So that makes life nice and easy. Regarding the item of the special meeting scheduled for Friday, um, I'm actually on the same page with the folks who came up for public comment. We actually do not have a quorum for that meeting. Uh, not even by a long shot because for that item, um, our lovely Vice Mayor McColey is recused from the item and the three of us are unavailable that evening because the girls' basketball team will be playing at the Capital One Center that night. And I have to take my daughter to an out of area appointment. So with that being said, you know, us not having a quorum for that meeting, regardless of it being a workshop or a voting item, it's, it, in my opinion, is severely inappropriate to host a special meeting without a quorum of the council to participate. So I am going to put an ad hoc motion on the floor that we, uh, reschedule that meeting to ensure that there is a quorum for that meeting.
I would like to add to that. And I think that, um, having a public meeting during business hours is not the right time. I think some of the businesses that we would like to attend are running their business and people are commuting and people who are at work. Uh, and on Friday probably isn't a really good day to do that. I want us to have that meeting as soon as possible. I was the one that pushed for it to get this out in the public and, uh, but we should recognize that this is February and we're talking about outside seating. So the urgency really isn't there at this time. So to add to what Trinity said, the more people that participate, the better. I would like to see it in the evening.
Caroline, do you have anything to report?
Let's see, I had three Secog engagements this week alone. I've had, or I've had enough right now of that neck of the woods. We had, did have a meeting with Heritage Park, which is part of that caboose movement. And then I did have an air district meeting. Um, one of the things that was brought up at the air district meeting was that in our neck of the woods, there's been a lot of people that have moved in that are all excited that they can burn, but they don't know how to do it. And so they smoke out their neighbors because they like to burn wet stuff. So number one, if you have a neighbor like that, you can try to teach them. You can call it into the air board even on the weekend because they do have people on staff to come out. And there's these cute little flyers now sitting in the office. If you want to go drop one on their doorstep, feel free to do so. Because it teaches them how to burn without smoking out their neighbors because they're burning the wrong stuff at the wrong time. It was kind of a fun conversation that we had. So they mailed us all a bunch of these. So they're in the office. But do know that yes, if your neighbors are burning trash or they're producing excess smoke, not a little bit, but like they're really burning all the wet stuff. You do have the right to put in a call into the air district even on a weekend. They have a phone number. Somebody's always on duty. They will call them out and educate or find if needs be because they are actually allowed to find people. They have that authority. So. Yeah. But just know, if you have somebody who doesn't know what they're doing because they haven't lived up here before, you can get them a flyer and put it on their doorstep. So. And it was a trivia night that we had last night. It was a lot of fun and the next one's on the 11th. So.
Thank you, Caroline. Brad. Monday, I had, uh, Laffco, Placer Laffco meeting, um, talking about, uh, some ambulance service changes for the South Placer area of Loomis. Looking at that, looking at a couple of municipal service reviews. Colfax is coming up for its municipal service review and sphere of influence review. Hopefully we can get some movement on that and look at some future annexations. And, uh, once we have that and, uh, tomorrow night, we're going to have the Placer Sierra Fire Safe Council meeting here at the City Hall at, uh, 6:00 PM. And, uh, we'll go ahead and cancel the, uh, the workshop. And, uh, move it to a better day when everybody can be here. Sorry, we should have reached out better for scheduling with council before we set that date. But, uh, we'll, uh, we'll make sure everybody from the public can get it and we'll find a good time and date. Yeah, absolutely. Make sure everybody can make it and it's an important subject. It's going to change the face of downtown a little bit and it has a lot of effect on several businesses. So we want to make sure we get it done. I think that was kind of the point of slapping it in on Friday and just picking the first date and then trying to get it as close to your guys' meeting as we could for Friday. So, um, no, we're, we're trying to move on as fast as we can so we can get, get that out from in front of your shop. Wheels of government turn slow, unfortunately. It's very frustrating. Great. Yeah. Well, we'll get it taken care of for you guys, for sure. So, um, Ron.
All right. Uh, busy time for city engineer Carl Moore and I. We're up at the skate park area evaluating the end of the building that's going to be torn down to see what all that's going to involve. Uh, we've been out evaluating some of the storm drain issues with, uh, within the city and coming up with solutions for those. And we're in the process of a, an agreement with a geo company to come out and do some surveying to find out why the water keeps coming up under Culver. So, uh, we'll be scheduling that as soon as possible to address that issue. I've had some IT problems, uh, City Hall. I ended up, ended up, or happened to order a new computer. The one I have is literally burning up. Yeah, that's not bad. Been a meeting with Jim Fletcher of Wood Rogers, Dan Rich of, uh, Next Gen and our chief line operator Matt Anderson to discuss the algae project and how that is, uh, moving along and when we'll be able to complete that, which we don't have an answer for at this time. Let's see, maintenance has been busy performing, uh, repairs in the sheriff station's, um, substation roof. Apparently was leaking quite a bit during the rainstorm. So they've got that addressed and taken care of. Of course, they've been out filling potholes all over South Auburn and Canyon, as well as other areas in the city. They've been performing some, uh, spring cleaning at the courtyard. Uh, if you noticed last year, we painted it so little by little, we're chipping away trying to bring that up to, up to spec. They've, uh, performed a lot of the underground service alerts, which means people are doing some construction and busy and following the rules, which we appreciate. And, uh, they were also out clearing many storm drains because all the debris and leaves wash into them and plug them up uh, during the big rainstorms. To address the roundabout sign, I've been working with Harry and maintenance staff. And, um, unless council objects, then please see me after the meeting because it's not agendized. We're thinking about using the same picture that was voted on to put on a digital sign that says Colfax with the picture of downtown on it. Harry's going to make us up stickers that go on it. We found a blank material so we can change those stickers anytime we like. So we're not, um, anchored to whatever, whatever we put up there. It's just an easy change. Uh, you're only talking about $300 for the stickers. So that'd be easy to change. Whole project, we're looking at under $900 for. So we will be moving forward on that again, unless anybody has, uh, concern with the actual picture that's going to go on there. And again, please see me after the meeting. Thank you so much.
Do you guys want to vote on that? Should we hold up the whole process and bring it back to council for a vote?
I just want to say thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just want to make sure everybody's good with that, you know, we have, we have an idea of the vision, but we're not going to get to finalize the vote on the vision. Okay. As long as you guys are good. All right. Thank you, Ron. All right. We'll move on to item eight, council business. Tonight we only have one item on, uh, the council business agenda. It's a funding request from the Service Community Center Farmers Market, uh, city manager. Will you please introduce the item?
Yes, yes, Jennifer, if you're here, please go up there.
Jennifer, Jennifer, that works too. Thank you very much for coming up to introduce items.
Okay. I don't know what to do.
Just, uh, let us know what you want. Yeah.
Yeah, that, that was beautiful. Please just kind of summarize that.
Okay. So I'm the farmers market manager. My name is Jennifer Mullen. Um, I am asking, um, the city to, in the amount of $200, $2,500 to enhance our local farmer's market. The funding will be specifically allocated towards hiring live music, organizing fun contests during the summer months. The farmers market has always been a vital part of our community, providing fresh produce, homemade goods and gathering place for residents. By introducing live music and engaging contests, we aim to transform the market into even a more vibrant and enjoyable experience. So, um, yeah, the purpose of the request is to hire live music to create a lively and welcoming atmosphere, organize fun contests that will engage attendees and foster a sense of community. Uh, the benefits will be creating a sense of camaraderie and connection among residents through interactive contests, offering a fun entertainment destination for families and individuals on Thursday evenings. The money will, that we're requesting will cover expenses related to hiring musicians, purchasing contest materials, and providing small prizes for contest winners. Um, your support will not only enhance the farmer's market, but also strengthen our community bonds. So I hope you guys consider. And I think that's all I got.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Are there any questions from the public? Can you come up? Thanks, Erin. Everybody wants to hear you.
Um, we talked so much about our, at the last community meeting, um, uh, for the downtown association about how important the farmer's market is and how much the community misses. Um, I guess at one point it was quite an event with, it's, uh, um, lots of music and things to engage in. And we probably had a half hour conversation on the farmer's market alone. So I'm so stoked to see this on the, on the calendar. I think the community wants it. So that's all I got to say.
Thank you. All right. Uh, any comments from the council? We'll start with Kim. Any, any comment?
Oh, what's, what's good for, uh, farmers markets, good for Colfax?
Great. Larry?
Yeah, I think it's a great idea and maybe we ought to also agendize the other requests that we had tonight.
Yes, we'll, we'll put that.
The next time. Full support though. I, I think it would grow the event and and I, I think the best way to get other people and from other places coming downtown is to get the Colfax people downtown. So I love it.
Trinity?
Yeah, I think it's fantastic. I'm glad to hear you guys want to add the live music component. I feel like this year it was wildly successful, especially with the ice cream cart and everything. That was awesome. I was going to say, um, you know, we do have multiple requests from the same nonprofit, um, for funding and it just triggered a thought for me. I'm just hoping that we can, um, prioritize. I know we can already do this, but just a, um, a breakdown when we do our mid-year budget review on, um, the contributions we've made to the different nonprofits. So we're able to kind of look through that and make sure that when we're doing our funding adjustments, we're spending a little extra attention on that, just to give it the, the appropriate focus. I want to make sure we take some time to establish priorities because I want to make sure we don't leave any nonprofits out that are going to have a, a, a bigger impact in like our tax revenue and, you know, just the general, um, appeal to the town. I want to make sure everybody gets, gets a reasonable cut.
Well, so far this fiscal year, you guys have already contributed $17,000. Um, and that's not counting the funds that were requested tonight.
And does that include, um, from the 3rd of July or was that in the prior fiscal year?
Prior fiscal year.
Okay. Yeah. So, um, if we can prioritize, maybe taking a look at that as like an informal staff report, just so we can kind of mull on it for a while. Not that you don't already have a million things to do. But I, I think that would be helpful for us to take a look at now since we're so high on the budget already. We haven't even gotten to the 3rd of July.
I have a quick question, Jennifer. I'm curious, what kind of contest are you looking at running? Okay, I was intrigued.
Can you, I'm sorry, can you come back up?
We need to forget. Yeah. Yeah.
I definitely like around Halloween, I want to do like a doggy contest, you know, like bring your dogs, dress them up, have a contest like that. Um, I'd also mentioned maybe to Andrea about bringing cornhole, cornhole down on Thursdays instead of on Wednesdays to bring more people down. So, you know, prizes for that or, you know, and I don't know. I'm not sure. I have to check with Placer County. I'm not sure what kind of contests I'm, I don't know if there's a certain.
Running under the nonprofit, you usually get a little bit of.
Leaving, right? Yeah. So, um, but yeah, so those are some of my, I mean, my goal is to bring it back to it being like the full street, you know? So it's just, we got to get people out.
I was just curious. That's not something I'd ever thought of tied into the farmer's market. So that's why I was like.
Yeah, like, or maybe not even like a contest, but like, um, you could, we could do bingo cards. And like, depending on the vendors, you know, like if you buy from this vendor and that vendor and stuff like that.
I was just curious what you're brainstorming. And then in a perfect world, any prizes come from local businesses, right?
Right. Yeah. Yeah, definitely.
Just throwing that out. Okay, thank you. To, to tack on to what you had said, Trinity, um, we, we do need to be aware and I love the fact that we have more nonprofits that are becoming aware of that account. But I also want to clarify that I'm pretty sure when we made that increase in fundage available, part of it was that anybody that was coming to ask money also has to show us what they have already done themselves to raise money for the cause. So don't come ask the city for money first. come ask the city for money first. You know, we want to know what other fundraising you've been doing. And obviously, if you're hosting the farmers market, you've got booths coming in. That's funding that. So that I understand. But so that, just to clarify, that if you are coming to ask for fundage from that account, you do also want to be able to show us what you have already done to fundraise for your event. Because I think we made sure to specify that, that we didn't want it to be looked upon as a bank account to get used, but to help over that last little hump to make sure an event happens. Kind of so.
Well, and that'll give us an opportunity to mull on it so we can formalize something so that it's it's transparent. People know what's expected before they come. I don't want to slap people with a requirement they weren't expecting.
Yeah. Yeah. No, I think it's a great idea. I love it. And it's been growing, you know? Every time, there's always more people down there and more hear about it. So I'm thrilled that you're adding to it.
All right, can I get a motion?
I'll move approval. I'll move approval of item 8A.
Second?
They're all jumping.
Get, somebody get it.
They both were like
I will second.
All right, Larry seconds. All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Got that out of the way and move on to item nine. Go to the order. Anybody got stuff to go to the order, Kim?
I had a couple of quick suggestions. He was talking about the water. So we don't call for
Go ahead. Well, we have we have public comment on good of the order, so we can say something about the water and then you can comment on it in just a second. That, that way we do this in the right order. One second. Stay right there. Don't go anywhere. I gotta follow the Robert's Rules of Order. I'm going to get in trouble. The lawyer over here is going to yell at me. Go ahead, Kim.
Could you say that again?
What? Gotta follow Robert's Rules of Order?
Okay, just one short thing. Usually on the first Thursday from eight to nine, we have coffee and conversation at the chamber. And I don't think anybody mentioned that, but if they didn't, I'll mention it. Free coffee and conversation, get together, kick ideas around. Eight to nine AM at the Train Depot. Thank you. Thank you.
Nothing tonight.
Just two things tonight. One reminder again, the varsity girls' basketball team at the high school is playing at the Golden One Center. Yep, they're playing at two o'clock on Friday at the Golden One Center. And this is for the section title. So if they do really well, we may be right back competing for state again.
NorCal.
Yep. So this is actually the San Joaquin section title that they're on Friday. And so then if they pass this, then they'll be competing for NorCal and then competing for state. So we want to root them on. Larry brought it to my attention that they did get bumped up a division early this year. So, you know, we got a little more competition than what we're traditionally used to, but we're, we're fighters.
They're playing Colne Rosa.
Yep.
Which is about three times the size of Culver.
Yep. So that's, that's our joy. My second item was actually about Robert's Rules of Order. So there is an updated edition, the Robert's Rules of Order 12th Edition, which is current from 2020 forward. And, you know, in the past, we've tried to make sure that when new council members came on, they got a copy of that to make sure we were familiar. I was just going to ask if we could consider making sure that we get copies of that for council, just because there have been changes in that new edition. And I'm not even familiar with all of them. And I've been reading for a bit. So I think it might be a great refresher if we can get a PDF license and send it around folks can come up to speed since we have adopted Robert's Rules of Orders as our methodology for this council. And I will just say, I'm bringing up a third random thing, and it is whatever this gentleman wants to talk about. So he has open leeway to give a public comment during good of the so.
I got them covered.
There we go.
Caroline, anything for good of the order?
Oh, my gosh. I did. But I don't remember what it was right now. I want to say that with the girls' basketball team coming up, I flashback on a conversation we had last year. And so I would like to, whether we need to put it on an agenda to see if we can make a policy, how we can work with it, that when we have any of our groups, whether it's our nonprofits, our sports teams, our music groups, whoever it is, if they have been recognized, state or national awards or champions, that group needs to come let the city know, get a graphics, we could slap it on the billboard.
I love it.
That's just me.
And you get a little
Some people say it doesn't care. Some people say the kids may not care, but this way to me, it shows us our dedication to our community, our nonprofits, our kids. So, but yeah, so really, I mean, whoever it is that got it or whoever's representing them would need to come to the city and let us know. And then they need to get whatever picture and graphics they need, and we can put it on our billboard and let it run for a little while so that we can, as a community, acknowledge those. But I want it to make sure that it's probably, it has to be a state or national award recognition, something like that.
Send a letter to Justin Hyman. He's the athletic director at the high school. And tell him what you would like to see.
So
He would take care of it.
Got it. Yeah, you got that. So I'm officially, because we talked about it a little bit when, when they played last year, and we kind of talked about the concert choir got an award and all this stuff. Can we please put it on the agenda so we can just make a policy and get it done? But it does have to specify that that group needs to come to the city and ask to get it put on there or somebody representing them. So.
Because that pertains heavily to the schools, it might actually be something that you and I can do outside of a meeting, establish something general, and then take it to the school so they have a process for submitting it.
That's
And then as far as how we want to recognize, we could take that to the council if you want.
I want to get it down and in and make sure that we don't let it It's got to go forward. You get to use it.
The more I change, the more people pay attention to it.
Only one thing. How about Culver Creek? Jeez. That's, that's a lot of water. We're working on it. Hopefully we'll have geoengineering done in the next month or so before, before the water dries up. We can't find it. Anyway, that's, that's all I had. Nothing else. Ron or Connor? Nothing?
No, I, I think Carl already has an appointment with the geo company even before we have an agreement to come out and start looking at it.
All right. Anything?
I would recommend Rosenberg's.
Yeah, short, sweet. You were looking
Short and sweet.
Excellent. I like that one better. Yeah. All right.
This is what I try and follow during, during the meetings. So.
Perfect. All right, public comment on good of the order.
I was just going to suggest, you were talking about where the water is coming from for Culver. Do you know where the sand cave is? Does anybody in here know where the sand cave is? If you know where Cliff Edwards' house used to be, okay, there's a cave there with an old mine. And it's full of beautiful water. Put a pump in it. It's almost the same level as the sewer or the water treatment plant. Pump that water out of there and you won't have this problem. That whole mountain's full of water. But Sand Cave is access to it. And the second thing I was going to suggest was you were talking about how people don't know about what's going on. The caboose is in the process. They're trying to move it. How about a marquee sign that rotates the city secretary or somebody can type in, you know, sidewalk coordinates, and it rotates, Colfax High School playing. You know, and things like that. And they could put it right where the, where the caboose is now. Just a rotating sign. Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, but they can't hear you.
Yeah, we're streaming.
How many of you know that the Colfax Girls Cheerleaders went to Las Vegas? And came back as national championships?
And yet, have we done anything? You didn't know that? Okay. That is absolutely amazing.
It could be on the rotating billboard.
Yeah. So anyhow, want to end on a good note. Thank you.